Please join me at this time in standing as Richard Fleming leads the board's opening prayer and remain standing as Randy Shackman leads the board in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas flag.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon our district. Thank you for this brand-new school year that you've given us. Please continue to give us the wisdom and the guidance to lead this district. Continue to bless our students, our teachers, and may you always give us the inspiration to meet the needs of the future in this ever-changing academic and political landscape. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas pledge: Honor the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the U.S., Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. May be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for each student. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all members are present, and we do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. As required by Board Policy BBD Local, each meeting of the board, the presiding officer shall announce and the minutes shall reflect the name of each board member who has completed the required training, who has exceeded the required hours of training, and who is deficient in the required training as of the date of the meeting before any vote of the board is taken. Let the minutes reflect that all members of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees have begun acquiring the hours required for 2016. We will now proceed with Agenda Item Number Two, Board Operations. Now ladies and gentlemen, we will be changing the order, and we will begin with Item Number 2C, followed by Number 2D, Number 2E, Items E.1 and E.2, and Item Number 2F. Then we will take Items Number 2A and 2B after those items. We will now begin a public meeting to discuss 2016-17 budget and proposed tax rate. As established in Texas Education Code Sections 44.002 through 44.006, the process to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for Texas public school districts includes a lawfully posted public hearing during which our constituents may participate. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may, during administration's presentation, submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table just outside the boardroom door. You may place the completed form in the box provided on that same table or present your completed form to Administrative Assistant Mrs. Sharon Scrivener over here in the red. Following the presentation, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board according to the forms received. At this time, I hereby recess-
Mr. Matthews, before you do that, I'd like to call a point of order, and I would move that-
We move the public portion of this meeting till after we've had a chance to present the budget materials to the folks that are here.
That's what we're gonna do.
We'll have to open the public hearing first, and then we'll present, and then call for comment.
So we're going to go to the public hearing, and then the public hearing is when they have the opportunity to speak?
Yes, yes, sir.
But I would, I am moving that we review the budget, look at the numbers, look at the details before we give the opportunity to our audience to speak.
Yeah, and that's what we'll, we have our attorney here. I think during the public hearing part, we can present our presentation prior to comment, correct, Mr. Luna?
Okay, alright, thank you, then that's fine.
At this time, I hereby recess our special meeting and open the public hearing portion of our agenda. Dr. Burns, I understand you and Ms. Tillman would like to begin with some words and a short presentation before we open the floor to comments and questions from our audience.
Yes, Mr. Matthews, thank you, and members of the board, and our audience, thank you. Thank you for being here. It's an important subject, public education, so we thank you for being here. I'd be remiss to not give you one little pitch about, remember, we need volunteers, and everybody join PTA, okay? So then we'll go on from there. Okay, Ms. Tillman, are you ready?
Yes, sir, thank you. Before we get started this evening, I just wanted to take a quick minute and recognize the individuals that really do all the work related to our budget and financial reporting. We lost two key members of our team last year through retirement. We lost over sixty-four years of experience with the retirement of Mark Hyatt and Marcia Harbor. It took us half a year to replace those two individuals, but I'm happy to say that we went out and recruited and found some great employees to continue our operations and the great things we've been doing in the business office. I would just want to introduce really quick, Steve Franks is here with us. He's our Director of Accounting. He works all year long with us on the budget and financial reporting. Next to Steve, we have our newest member of our team, Shawn Robinson. He is our accounting supervisor, and we recruited him from Dallas County Schools. Next to him, we have Anna Brady, who is at every board meeting, but she sits on the back row, and I can't ever get her to scoot up to the front, so you know she's here. She collects all the taxes for the district. We have Michelle Sees. She replaced Marcia Harbor, and she'll be working with supporting our campuses with their business operations. And then, of course, Scott Roderick took the position of Chief Financial Officer for the district. And on the back, Vicky Pippin, will you stand up, please? She also took the role of Director of Financial Reporting, the position that Scott vacated. So I just wanted to thank them and let you know that these are the people really responsible for all the hard work every year with our budget and our finance office. So, thank you. So each year, we start the budget process in September, and throughout the year, we present information to you, the board, and the public. We held a public workshop as well with the board and a work study, working to the point that we bring you the final product the week before school, typically on meet-the-teacher night. So I apologize for anyone that's not getting to meet their teacher this evening. Within all of this information, we're not going to cover all of it again this evening, however, I am going to highlight the major points of the budget for 1617, as well as add some additional information related to some of the questions that were posed at our last meeting, as well as some questions we've received since that meeting. The school board is required to adopt a budget by August 31 for three funds: the General Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and the Food Service Fund. This evening, we're gonna start out looking at our General Fund. Our 2015-16 adopted budget was a $6.9 million deficit. Looking at 2016-17, we are proposing a balanced budget at $255.9 million. I wanted to take a minute to remind you of some of the unique features of our school funding, so that you know when you're looking at how much our revenue increased, what is actually revenue that we have available to the district to utilize. So as you look at our revenues and you go down to about the fourth line on our sources of fund, TRS-on-behalf, you can see $10.2 million in 1516 and $10.6 million in 1617. Just want to remind you that TRS-on-behalf is not revenue that the district receives, so we really don't have $400,000 more dollars available to us. This is a mechanism we're required to report on our books. This is actually the money the state is sending to TRS on behalf of our employees for their retirement system. However, we have to record the revenue and the expenditures on our books. They match exactly, but it can give the appearance of additional revenue that we don't really have. Another unique feature of our funding system is the recapture payment as you go down into our sources. With our Chapter 41 funding system, there are certain pennies that we aren't allowed to keep all of the revenue for, and I'll talk more about that when we're talking about our tax rate. But when you look at our revenue and you're looking at a tax revenue increase, you do have to consider that $5.7 million of that revenue in 1617 does go back to the state. And finally, you see a TIF payment. Our district chose to participate in three TIF funds in 1999. A TIF zone is designed to finance infrastructure and projects that encourage commercial growth. So each year, we collect taxes in three different TIF zones. Those tax funds then go to those cities, and they use those funds for infrastructure projects in that region. We get a portion of those funds back to use on school projects, however, it does not go back into the General Fund. The increase in our TIF payment from 1516 to 1617 is a direct result of property value growth. So our payment increases, and we send more money to the city for that infrastructure project. So as you look at the 1516 and 1617 revenue, keep in mind that you really need to back out the TRS-on-behalf, the recapture, and the TIF payment to get a true picture of the revenue that's available to the district. If you do this for those years, the increase would be 7.78% in our revenue. Each of you received a Quick Facts book a week ago. You also have a copy now. The hard copy's a little bit easier to read. In that, we gave you five years' worth of data. So if you go back to 1213 and you're looking at our revenue in 1213, you'll see that it was $202 million, and it's on page seventeen of your Quick Facts book if you want to look at that information. So if you're looking at 1213 and rolling forward to 1516, just looking at the numbers, you would be comparing $202 million to $231 million. However, in 1213, our TRS-on-behalf payment was only $8.6 million. In 1516, that went up to $10.2 million. So again, that's revenue that we really don't have access to, but it does show to be an increase in our revenue. Another interesting thing in 1213, our TIF payment was only $13.8 million. Comparing to 1516, that's $22.9 million. So that's another increase of an outflow from our tax revenue that we don't have available in 1516. If you factor those things out of the revenue, you would see just over a 10% growth in our revenue from 1213 to 1516. So that would be about 3.3% per year in our revenue growth from 1213 to 1516. Looking at our general operations and our uses of funds, you'll see we're going from $215 million to $223.9. This is a 4.14% increase in our general operating expenditures, and we will cover on another slide what makes up that increase. Then you see our recapture payment and our TIF payment getting us to the $255.9 million. In looking at our revenue changes from 1516 to 1617, we're gonna start with our state funding numbers. Our state funding is decreasing by $14.8 million going from the 1516 budget to 1617. The first piece of our decline is a result of enrollment decline in 1516. We've lost approximately 430 students, and so we have to recognize that decline going into our 1617 budget year. In addition, for 201617, we are estimating an additional decline in enrollment of 350 students. That will be an additional loss of $2.1 million in revenue. The next line, you see an $11.1 million decrease from prior-year increase in property value. This is where the state comes in and reduces our funding as a result of property value growth. This is not this budget year's property values, this is the prior year. There's a one-year lag in between when they recognize our share of funding and the actual year we're collecting taxes. So this $11 million is from last year's property value growth, and I'm going to give you a little more information on that to try to make it a little more clear. With the tax ratification election, we would receive an additional $1.7 million in Tier Two funding. Tier Two are those golden pennies, the six pennies above the dollar, whereby there's no recapture on those pennies, and the state also gives you funds to get you up to the Austin ISD yield. So if you're below their wealth level, then they do provide you with some additional revenue. Unfortunately for us, with our TIF programs, we would lose some state funding as a result of the arrangement with our TIFs, which would basically offset the increase we would receive from Tier Two. The way our TIF payment works is that that began when our M&amp;O rate was $1.50, so the state holds us harmless because we are now at $1.4. So they make up the difference between the $1.50 and the $1.4 through a supplemental payment, because we still send $1.50 worth of tax effort into the TIF funds even though we're only collecting $1.4. So the state makes us whole with that piece of funding. If we start collecting $1.17, then the state will only make up the difference between $1.50 and $1.17. So we'll lose a little bit of funding with that piece of it. In looking at our tax revenue, there would be an increase of $38.4 million. $22.9 million is related to the additional pennies, and $15.5 million is related to property value growth. Again, cautioning that that $15 million will hit us in 1718 through our state funding system. This is one of the unique features of school finance that is unique and no other entity that I'm aware of that taxes has this feature happening to them where they're losing out state funding as a result of tax value increase. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about how this funding works so that you could see it. In general, the intent of the current school funding system is to promote wealth equalization among school districts by balancing state and local sources of funding available to school districts. We have a multi-layered system. What you're looking at here is Tier One, which is the first layer of our system. Tier One provides the basic level of funding on a per-student allotment based upon the various types of students we're serving. So you can see here on lines 28 through 37, we are going through formulas and applying weights for the specific populations we're serving and coming up with the amount of Tier One funding. So as you look at the first column for 1516, and you look at line 38, you can see based upon the students we're serving in 1516, we're due $175.5 million. You go down to the next line, 39, and you see less local fund assignment. This is where the state applies a dollar's worth of tax effort to our tax base, which would be $14 billion in this case, and come up with a number that we actually are going to fund $143.2 million of our Tier One funding. So this drops the state's portion of Tier One to $32.2 million. So now, as we roll over into 1617, you can see line 38 is $173 million. The decline from $175.5 to $173, that is the result of us projecting a loss of 350 students in our enrollment, so that number declines as we start. However, you see our local fund assignment has gone up from $143 million to $154 million. This is what I'm referring to when I say we're losing from our prior-year property value growth. So in 1516, our share was $143.2. In 1617, our share is now $154.3 million, which directly results in the state funding less to the school district. So that's why that number is in green, because the state benefited from that 2015 growth in our property values. As we look at our expenditures for 1617 and the changes from 1516, our departments and campuses were funded at the same level that they've been funded at many years. We had no change. We gave them the basic allotment amounts on their per-student basis as we did in 1516. The board has approved a $4.8 million compensation plan increase for all employees of 3.5%. This was above the market raise that was being provided in the area, and that was intentional because we are below market for our teachers, and we were trying to make ground. We really got behind in 1112 through 1314 because one year we gave no raise, and then we gave below market for a couple of years. So we're trying to make up ground on that, so the board went ahead and approved the raise going into 1617. In addition, we budgeted $603,000 for performance pay. We changed the timeline on our performance pay. In the past, there was enough time in between the results of our academic performance and the time we were paying that we knew what we had to budget. Now, we've shortened that time, so we don't know at the point we're preparing the budget what our actual payment's going to be. So this funds 100% of our performance pay in the event that we hit the first tier on that payment system. We also have budgeted $420,000 for buses. This will purchase four buses. We have $3 million that's contingent upon the passing of the TRE in November. We worked extensively with the District Improvement Council and our principals, and also at a work study with board members to identify priorities going into 1617. We have these funds ready that will be utilized for items such as class size reduction, which came up as a number-one priority with our board and staff members, as well as instructional support and other program expansions that we've worked on with work studies with the board, such as dual-language and daily physical activity programs. All of those would be brought back to the board after the election was passed to determine how those funds would be used, because we'd also want to see what our enrollment looks like in September and October. We would have a $5.8 million recapture payment, and then our $3.2 million TIF payment increase that is related to our prior-year property value growth. So all the items in red are items that would be funded with the TRE pennies. Now, some of these items without the TRE will still be funded, but they would come out of our fund balance reserve. Some of them would be put on hold indefinitely, and we would not take action on them in 1617. The first item, the compensation plan, has already been approved, so without the TRE, we would still have the compensation plan in place. However, it would come out of our reserves, which would put us in a situation in 1718 where we would not be able to move forward with our compensation adjustments because our reserves would be down to our minimum level. The performance pay has also been approved by the board, so without the TRE, we'll move forward with that as well, but it would also come out of our reserve fund. Technology would be put on hold and would not be moved forward with without a TRE. Our buses would be put on hold without a TRE. Our $3 million contingency funds that would be used for board and staff identified priorities would not be moved forward in 1617. There would be no recapture payment, and there would be a $3.2 million TIF payment because that's directly resulting from property value growth. So with the TRE, all of the items in red would move forward. Without the TRE, all of the items with two asterisks beside them would not move forward. This is what our fund balance would look like with the proposed budget. We went in 2017 with adequate reserves, and we would be able to continue moving forward with the plans that we came up with on our Vision 2020 goals related to performance and compensation. We're gonna take a quick look at our Debt Service Fund. This is the fund where we put the interest and sinking portion of our tax rate. These funds can only be used to service our debt payments for our bonds. So we basically just take a look at what our yearly debt service amount would be, and we use that amount to calculate our tax rate. Our debt service payment is not going up from 1516, so we're looking at approximately $40.3 million in debt service. The final fund that the board is required to approve is our Food Service Fund. This fund has done a great job in terms of maintaining adequate reserves and staying within their revenue streams. We are proposing a budget of $12.6 million, and it is a balanced budget, not changing significantly from 1516. Now, we're gonna talk about our proposed tax rate. This is CFB's historical tax rate going back to 2005, 2006. We start with that year because that's the year before compression, when the state required us to lower our rate. So our rate was $1.8259 in 2005-6. Then we were required to compress over the next two years down to $1, and then the board was allowed to add four pennies back. From that point, it requires voter approval for anything above $1.4. We have maintained that $1.4 since that time, so we've actually lowered the tax rate eight times since 2005-6. We've only increased the tax rate two times since 2005-6. During those times, we did have some declines in our property values. If you look at our tax rate compared to other districts in DFW, we're currently looking at Dallas, Denton, Tarrant, and Collin County. Our current tax rate in 2015 was $1.2817. We're proposing $1.3917 for 2016. The average for these four counties is $1.4738 for 2015, and we believe that average will be going up for 2016 based upon the TRE elections that are currently proposed. So even with the TRE, we will be well below the DFW average for school districts. We looked at approximately 62 tax rate in these four counties. Ninety percent of the districts in these four counties had a rate higher than Carrollton Farmers Branch. There were only six districts that had a rate lower than us, and those were very small We also took a look at what districts were doing in terms of asking for additional resources. So we combined both bond requests as well as tax ratification election requests. We looked at 16 districts in the area. The average was three per district. The highest was six. This is all since 2003, and the lowest was one. We've had one bond issue since 2003 compared to what our neighbors are doing, ranging from three to six. Some tax rates go as high as $1.67 to $1.61, most around the $1.35 to $1.45 range. We also wanted to look at how tax rates compared in terms of the populations they're serving, so we combined the tax rate with their percentage of low-income students. We know that schools that serve more challenging student bodies need more resources to accomplish the same results. On this graph, you can see Carrollton Farmers Branch has one of the lowest tax rates, and we're serving one of the highest number of low-income students, with the exception of Dallas ISD, whose tax rate is slightly above ours at $1.2829, and they do have a higher poverty level than our district. They are also this evening discussing a tax ratification election. The tax rate we are proposing is for our maintenance and operation rate to go from $1.4 to $1.17, which would be a 13-penny increase. We're proposing our Interest and Sinking Fund decrease from $2417 to $2217, leaving a net increase of 11 pennies. This would be an 8.58% increase in our tax rate. The tax rate proposed would trigger a tax ratification election. The purpose of a tax ratification election is to permit the registered voters of the district to determine whether to approve the tax rate adopted by the board. Now, all of these pennies are not created equal, so that's what I wanted to give you just a little bit of information about on our maintenance and operation. I talked to you about our multi-layered funding system, so this is another layer to it. As we look at the $1.17, if you want to look in your Quick Facts book on page three, you can sort of follow along with how our tax rate works. So we have three equalized wealth levels when it comes to our maintenance and operation tax rate. The first dollar worth of tax effort is Level One, and the wealth level we are allowed to retain for those pennies is $514,000 per weighted average daily attendance. We are under that number at about $470,000, so on that first dollar of tax effort, we have no recapture from the state. The next six pennies, you can see on here, is the second equalized wealth level, and you see it says unlimited, because those six pennies are the pennies that we don't have to pay any recapture on, and the state actually gives us additional funding if we're below the Austin ISD yield level. And finally, the third level of equalized wealth are the last 11 pennies, and those are the pennies that they have established a lower level of $319,500, and so that's where the recapture would kick in for Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. Our wealth level is above that amount, so on those last 11 pennies, we do have recapture, and that's where the $5 million comes from, is recapturing that wealth down to the $319.5. We wanted to give you an idea of what the impact of the 11 pennies would be on various market values of homes. This is $50,000 all the way up to $250,000. Our average ranges between $175 and $200. So if you go and look on those lines with a $25,000 homestead exemption, the monthly increase would be between $13 and $16 a month. Our average value did go up from $174,780 to $187,000, which was just over a 7% increase on average. If you factor in that increase along with the 11 pennies, that would be approximately a $30 a month increase for the average taxpayer. that would be approximately a thirty dollar a month increase for the average taxpayer, assuming they're in that range of homes going from one seventy-four to one eighty-seven. In addition, individuals whose taxes have been frozen for sixty-five and older, they would not be impacted by this unless they have dropped below their original frozen tax amount. So as we've lowered our taxes, you know, their tax isn't frozen at that amount. They get to pay less if their tax bill drops. However, if the tax bill goes back up, they can go back up to whatever their original frozen amount was. So it could impact them, but it would never take them above their original frozen tax amount. With the adoption of this tax rate, we would be adopting a rate above our total effective tax rate. We are required to calculate and publish this rate. The effective rate is the rate that produces the same amount of tax revenue in the current year as was produced in the prior year if applied to the same property value. That rate for us is a dollar twenty-one twenty-four sixty-four. And I will say, we have to calculate our effective rate similarly to other taxing entities. However, nowhere do they adjust that calculation for our loss in state funding. So it is an effective rate, but it really doesn't represent the revenue that we have access to. We still have to comply with all the statutory requirements, just as if we're getting to keep all of that revenue. So with the adoption of this rate, the language we would require to have to use to adopt the rate is included in your folder as sample material for your use. In addition to statutory language related to motions, if we adopt above the effective rate, we are also required to include certain language in the resolution that adopts the tax rate as well as post this information on our website. We have included that language and it is currently posted on our website. School board members across the state of Texas have been struggling with the tax ratification election concept since two thousand seven. And you can see from here with five hundred and forty-two elections being held thus far that over thirty-seven hundred board members have ultimately decided that they wanted to give their voters the opportunity to decide on additional resources for their students. We wanted to look specifically at DFW and just give you an idea of what's happened in our area since the first year that we were able to hold tax ratification elections. The first year was two thousand seven. What we're looking here in the left corner, we have Denton County with Collin County. Then we have in the bottom left, Tarrant County, and then Dallas County. So in two thousand seven, there were four elections in our area. Two thousand eight, six more elections. Two thousand nine, two more elections. Two thousand ten, ten elections. This year, people were anticipating what was coming in two thousand eleven because the state had already been estimating what their revenue shortfall was going to be. So people were anticipating major cuts in funding, which did materialize. Two thousand twelve, three more. Two thousand thirteen, four more. Two thousand fourteen, three more. Two thousand fifteen, four more. Two thousand sixteen. These are what are proposed that we are aware of right now with Irving, Dallas, and Frisco being the large districts in the area have either called or have proposed elections. You still see some school districts that have not called TREs or proposed TREs, so we took a look at their tax rates as well. So as you take a look at the area, you can see even districts that have not held a tax ratification election have rates that are well above what we're proposing, including a TRE. We wanted to take a look at some additional data. This data is a result of some of the questions that were brought up at our last meeting as well as questions that I've received since that meeting. Of course, one of the question that always comes up is how are we doing with our resources? And what indications do we have that we've been good stewards and have made adjustments along the way? One thing that we looked at and we shared with you last time is how our spending compares to other districts in the area. CFB is at approximately eighty-seven hundred dollars. We're below the average for DFW districts, Dallas County districts, Region Ten districts, and Denton County. For anybody that has spent any time with the district and has attended board meetings, you are aware of the Education Resource Group and you've had the privilege of sitting through many of their presentations. This is a third-party independent group that ranks the two hundred largest school districts in the state of Texas. They are evaluating performance along with the spending. They issue an ERG financial index that analyzes how well each district used its resources in four financial performance categories. They look at our expenditures in terms of instructional services, leadership services, student support services, and non-student support services. They combine this and determine whether or not we spent less than expected or more than expected based upon the students we're serving. In twenty fifteen, CFB had a negative value in all four categories that indicated that the district operated efficiently and spent less than expected in all four spending categories. For two thousand fifteen, we were ranked number thirty-four out of the two hundred largest districts or at the eighty-three point five percentile. If you look over time, we have made movement up in this category, so we've made some improvements in our financial index. However, the financial index is not our target. We're really interested in our performance and how we're doing in terms of academics and financial combined. ERG also has a ranking in this category. It's called the District Productivity Index. The productivity index can help identify those districts who are providing the highest relative academic performance at the lowest relative cost per student. In two thousand fifteen, we were ranked number nine out of two hundred districts at the ninety-fifth percentile. If you look over time, we've stayed in the top ten since two thousand nine with the productivity index. Another question that was brought up was concerns about our staffing levels, so we wanted to take a look at our staff going back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Here, we're looking at total staff. This is all funding sources, local and federal. So we in two thousand eight, two thousand nine had three thousand three hundred and seventy-one employees. In fifteen sixteen, we're down to three thousand ninety-seven. So since oh eight, oh nine, our total staff has changed by just over two hundred and seventy-four units. Our teacher number has changed by a hundred and fifty-eight units. Out of that hundred and fifty-eight, keep in mind that we did make an adjustment to our pre-K program, which would have reduced our staffing by twenty-five to thirty units, as well as we have lost students. Our enrollment has declined from this time period and we'll look at that in a minute. That would account for another twenty-one of those teaching units. The next category, administrative and support staff, you can see five hundred and three to five hundred and eight. Now, if we went strictly by how TEA reports and categorizes, we would have a line just for administration and just for support staff. But the administration line has a hundred and thirty-three units in it and it includes only principals, assistant principals, and specific positions. So it doesn't include all central office staff. So that's why we combine these to get a true picture of these units. And we've also had movement between the groups. Within the five hundred and eight units, we have added federally funded positions. We added thirty-four support positions that are included in this number, such as interventionists and instructional coaches. Those title funds must be used for supplemental services. They cannot be used to provide things that we're legally required to do. Educational aides has declined as well as auxiliary staff. So you can see from oh eight, oh nine, we have been declining in our staffing, but beginning in thirteen fourteen, we started making slight adjustments up and we'll see the impact on our student-teacher ratios on this slide. So on the top line, you can see our teacher number going from eighteen twenty-one to sixteen sixty-four, which is a decline. Our enrollment also went from twenty-six two fifty-seven to twenty-five seven ninety-six. The highest point on our student-teacher ratio was sixteen point two, which was in twelve thirteen. That was in year two of the historical budget reductions from the state. We have made progress in our ratio over the last three years. You can see we've declined back down from sixteen point two to fifteen point five. Now, this ratio does include all teachers and all students, so we do have special project programs that aren't staffed at these levels that do impact this ratio. Just a few other performance indicators in terms of the questions about how we're doing with our tax dollars. Again, we mentioned Education Resource Group, which has consistently ranked the district in the top ten performing districts out of the largest two hundred. There's also a ranking called the Texas Smart Schools. This was the state comptroller's original FAST program that was developed and that was then converted into what's called Texas Smart Schools. It's a different look at effectiveness and efficiency. It's a value-added model and in the last ranking, CFB was ranked as a high academic progress at low spending compared to our peers. In addition, we have maintained our fund balance level at adequate levels, even given significant legislative changes that we've weathered over the past ten years. Our ten-year results of operation, we have actually operated in the majority of the year within our revenue sources. We've only had three years where we actually dipped into our fund balance reserves. And the question of what we've done over that time period, I went back to our budget books because I wasn't here during some of this time and pulled what we actually published in terms of what we were doing to impact some of the reductions in our funding. So I'm just going to read out a few of the things that the district has done under the past, since two thousand nine, two thousand ten. In that particular year, we returned pre-K to half-day. We increased secondary class size and teaching loads to twenty-eight. We increased fifth grade class sizes. We reduced assistant principal position, reduced assistance and learning center managers, reduced non-mandated summer school programs, reduced our sick leave and annual buyback programs, reduced central office positions, reduced curriculum and instruction division, reduced technology division, reduced English and second language instructional facilitators, reduced standard part-time positions and overtime, reduced maintenance and security operations. We consolidated campuses. Montgomery was consolidated to Blair. The Community Learning Complex pre-K Center was closed with students absorbed into their home campuses and additional summer school reductions were incurred. In two thousand eleven, twelve, no compensation adjustments were made for any staff members and we pursued state mandated waivers for class sizes. Moving forward, we reduced all campus and departmental operating budgets by five percent. We restructured Mary Grimes and reduced staffing levels. We requested class size waivers for seventy-seven classrooms, eliminated the employee assistance program, closed Kelly pre-K Center, and renegotiated our electricity rates to lower our total operating costs. We maintained the five percent reduction in campus departmental budgets going into thirteen fourteen, requested class size waivers for fifty-nine classrooms, and renegotiated our electricity for another year. We requested waivers of twenty-eight classrooms in fourteen fifteen, closed five support and auxiliary positions, and closed four open positions on campus enrollment declines. Fifteen sixteen, we've made an effort to monitor overtime. We've reduced overtime by just under a hundred thousand. We've eliminated software of approximately a hundred and thirty-two thousand and we reduced our spending in technology by four point five million. Throughout it all, no one lost their job. They were all placed in an open position through the attrition process. And we could sit here for hours debating and going through lots of data to try to determine if we think that we have done a good job or been good stewards with our taxpayer dollars. But we want to end with just one final piece of data, and that's our graduation rate. And you can see from two thousand nine, we've gone from eighty-two point five to ninety-three point nine. And we don't think anyone will argue with the importance of how the graduation rate impacts our community and our economy. Our objectives this evening are to hold a public meeting. We are then hoping that we'll consider adopting our twenty sixteen seventeen budget and then consider adopting a tax rate for our sixteen seventeen school year. This concludes the information that I have available this evening. Thank you.
At this time, the board will entertain questions and comments regarding the proposed budget and tax rate from the floor. As explained before the presentation, interested individuals who have submitted request to speak forms will be called to the podium. Ms. Scrivener, have you received any additional forms indicating interested speakers? Now, ladies and gentlemen, when your name is called, please proceed to the podium and announce your name and address in the microphone so that we may acknowledge you and we may all fully hear your statements and questions. Our first speaker. Excuse me? Oh, no. Anita Clowers. You're not speaking. Okay, thank you. Bruce Crozier. By the way, if I mispronounce your names, I apologize, but I probably won't because I'm good at announcing names. Just saying. Go ahead, sir.
I am Bruce Crozier and Twenty-nine Thirty-nine Harley Drive in Farmers Branch. Been a resident of Farmers Branch for over twenty years. And on top of the already ten percent increase in the appraised values that we're getting from the Dallas County, the extra eight percent is just, seems to be too much. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next up, Tara Hrbachik.
Good evening. My name is Tara Hrbachik and I live at fourteen zero six North Main Street in Carrollton, Texas. My almost-seventh-grade son and my family have taken full advantage of a special program offered by our district, the International Baccalaureate IB Program. I worry about the future of the program without additional investment. I've struggled for years to explain the IB program to others, but here is what I do know. Built into the program are, is character education with the IB attitudes of appreciation, commitment, confidence, integrity, and curiosity. Also built in are the IB learner profiles, caring, communicator, enquirer, principled, and a risk-taker. This is just a sample of the core beliefs and principles that are part of the program. When you think about what you want for your child, of course, health and security is forefront, but these attitudes and profiles is who I want my child to be. I know that character education is already part of our district, but the IB program has the distinction of drilling these attitudes and profiles into IB students every single day in all of the classwork they do. The IB schools educate parents on how to bring these characteristics into our homes and conversations there. It has been part of my son's vocabulary and daily life since kindergarten. I was recently playing a game with my son Jake where you roll together, roll dice to gather points or stop rolling so you don't lose the points you have collected. Jake had quite a lot of points and on his turn, he rolled again and lost it all. I laughed and teased him. Jake said, "Mom, you do know I have received awards for being a risk-taker, right?" This is what I want, him trying and succeeding, him taking risks and failing, learning. I see him be compassionate and I see him be an inquisitive. I know without a doubt that because Jake hears these profiles and attitudes every day and not just from his parents, they have stuck. I also like the IB program because it captures other things in its daily life that I have heard this board discuss as a priority for each student, physical education, fine arts, and foreign language. These items are considered just as important as the academic content as they were required every day for the IB kids. They are considered, considered essential, not extra. An IB administrator once told me they like this because it allows the IB students to flex their weaknesses. They can't hide from the things they are strong in. I feel like that teaches the lessons for life. I've made the choice to become informed about what is happening in our district through these board meetings, my PTA involvement, and in general, just being present. With that knowledge comes trust. I trust that the administrators and teachers are making the best decision for my child's education. If I don't understand or don't think it's the right decision, I ask the questions. I trust that the board will ask questions of the administrators. I also trust you to believe that investing in my child is the best thing to do for him and his future. And with this additional investment, I trust that you will continue to question administrators and staff to make sure they are continued, they continue to be efficient with that investment, even if that- even if that additional investment comes with the ugly label of tax. Thank you.
Next up, Diane Dobus.
My name is Diane Dobus, and I live at 8776 Sabine Court in Irving, 75063. I have been a proud parent in our district for the last 13 years and a taxpayer in our district for the last 13 years. Dr. Burns and members of the school board, I strongly encourage that you adopt the tax ratification election. We have an amazing school district. These monies will allow us to be even better. We will be able to expand our programs and achieve the next level. These programs keep us from being just another average school district. People don't move into an average school district. We are already losing students to the surrounding districts and private schools. I'm a Westsider. Our students on the West Side are involved in the IB program, an IB program that last year graduated the most IB diploma candidates so far and was just recognized as number 307 in the Newsweek's Top High Schools. Would the IB program be one of those cut because it could no longer be funded? We can't sacrifice when it comes to educating our children. Our education system is an investment in our communities and an investment in our future of our communities. We need strong schools. When we have strong, six, strong, successful schools, people move into the area, resulting in businesses moving into the area, with the final result of having a strong community. I encourage you to vote to invest in the future of our children, and please let the voters decide whether or not to give CFB this increase. Give us a voice in our future. I'll leave you with a thought from a very wise man: education is an investment, not an expense.
Next up, Vivian Dobus.
Hello, my name is Vivian Dobus. I live at 8776 Sabine Court, Irving, Texas, 75063. I wanted to speak tonight so you could see what your decision this evening will directly affect. I'm a junior at Ranchview High School. I participate in the CFB Ambassador Program. I'm in IB, I'm, I'm in the IB program. I'm a student officer for the orchestra, and I have played the violin for the past six years. I'm in the French club. I'm a manager for the girls' basketball team and was awarded the TABC 4A All-State Student Assistant of the Year Award, one of the four in the entire state for 4A schools and the first one for CFB. And lastly, I'm a student athletic trainer involved in the sports medicine program, which will help me pursue my future in the medical field. This, sorry, the programs that I am involved in are helping me prepare for the rest of my life. If you choose not to pass the vote, many of these programs will be cut. That will make our schools just average. I live in Irving, right now, right next to Capel Schools. Many of my friends that I attended grade school with chose to leave our, our schools to go to private schools or move out of our district. Can you imagine what will happen if we no longer have the IB program or some of the academies in the other schools? I ask you to make the, make the decision to invest in my fellow classmates and me. We are the future. Thank you.
Next up, Sally Derrick.
Hello, my name is Sally Derrick. I live at 3,000 Randy Lane in Farmers Branch. I'm a lifelong resident of Carrollton Farmers Branch. I have two children that attend one of your excellent programs, the Dual Language Program. I have a fourth grader who's at Janie Stark Elementary and a seventh grader who attends Vivian Field Middle School. I support the TRE, and I encourage my friends and neighbors to do so as well. Strong schools equal strong communities, and I believe that CFB ISD is financially, a financially responsible district. Programs like Dual Language and our exceptional fine arts offerings are what makes us stand above the others. The investment in our district is an investment in our community. Tonight, I please urge you to adopt the TRE. Thank you.
Next up, Charlene Gaffney.
My name is Charlene Gaffney. I live at 1612 Valley Crest Lane. I'm a lifetime resident from 1972. I am not for the tax increase. I think it's way too high, and I think Carrollton Farmers Branch has a good school district as it is, and I'm just not for the tax increase. Thank you.
Next up, Martin Peter. Next up, Mike Del Valle.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Wanted to get up and speak and let you know why I won't support a tax increase. From the online numbers published in the yearly district budget, it is obvious to anyone looking at the district has not taken a hard look at their expenses. What reduction or cuts have been made? Each year's expenses are greater than the last. You have not proposed a balanced budget for years. You always project deficit spending. Even in the couple of years when you had a small surplus at the end, the budget started out with deficits. Now you want the taxpayers to fund a huge budget shortfall, the largest deficit budget ever proposed, rather than making it necessary cuts. What is driving the need for more money? Are you being asked to serve more students? Your posted attendance numbers show that for well over a decade, there has been a constant small trend down in enrollment. So you aren't serving more students, you're serving less, and yet your budget goes up every year. While the number of students is going down, property values have skyrocketed. Your data shows that appraisals were up over 8% just last year. In three years, they are up an average of 15 to 20%. This has added $30 million in income, 30 million more to spend on fewer students. Really? And now, on top of the big property value tax increase, you want to add 8.6% in more new taxes that will be compounded against the inflated values we're already paying? Is the district worried that taxable values are going to shrink? There are so many new projects in Carrollton, Farmers Branch, and Irving that are just coming onto our tax rolls, and each of our cities have plans over the next two to five years for many more developments and will be adding to our robust tax base. Sorry, I'm getting dizzy here. Yes. Thank you. I think so. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so there are so many new building projects in Carrollton, Farmers Branch, and Irving that are just coming onto our tax rolls, and each of our cities have plans over the next two to five years for many more new developments that will keep adding to our robust tax base. We are lucky to live where property taxes are increasing through growth without the need for a rate increase. Lastly, without a tax election, by your numbers, the district has had an average windfall of $10 million more tax income in the last 30 years. $30 million. Revenue is way up, while students being served is down. Enough is enough. Live on the increases you have and don't burden us anymore. If Dr. Burns and you, our board, can't live on $10 million more income a year, I think we need new leadership. Our community can't afford a second layer of new taxes on top of the appraisals you, that we already have received. Thank you.
Next up, Camille Johnson.
I'm Camille Johnson, 1910 Camden Way, Carrollton, Texas. And excuse my voice, I've kind of lost it a bit. I concur with exactly what Mike was talking about, and a lot of my points is what his points are. So I'll try to find some that aren't the same. Also, the meeting schedule for tonight is not on the normal school board meeting in 6 o'clock. That's not a normal time that the school board meets, and there's so many people that aren't even home from work at 6 o'clock in the evening. So a lot of people could not be represented this evening. You're getting such a large increase of tax revenue on the increased appraisal, which is 8%, which is another 22 million. That's not counting the 8.6 that you all want to have an increase on. And like Mike said, the top appraisals the last two years are like 15 to 20%, much higher, are higher also. The district income was over, in 2012-13, 202 million, and last year it was 232 million. So that's like 30 million more than the year before. There is a lot of new development in our school district, and that's going to have more revenue coming in over the years. Has this been taken into consideration? Yes, we'll be paying more taxes, and a lot of people think that the people in apartments don't pay school taxes or city taxes, but you do. You do. That's in your apartment, however much you pay a year. Let's see. If you all get an 11-cent tax increase, how much of that money will the district get to use and how much will be given to the state? It's not that we don't want to have tax increases. We want to make sure it's for the right reasons in that everything's been checked, you can, well, we just want to make sure it's for the right reasons and all. And basically, there's a teacher's pay increase, which is great, that's going to be this school year. 3.5%, I think the newspaper said, like, one point is 1.4 million, so that's like 4.5 million for not only the teachers, but it's the, all the administration and everything, everybody working for the district. Is that correct? All right, thank you. All right, so you already have 22 more million coming in from the appraisals. And really, how much more do you actually need? Everybody has to go by budgeting each year because it changes each year, and I hope our district is doing that also. Thank you.
Next up, Tom Mayfield.
Thank you for having us up here tonight. I'm Tom Mayfield. I live at 1805 Glengarry Drive, Carrollton, Texas. I kind of concur with what Camille and, and Mike both said. I, I feel like the district is top-heavy administratively speaking. I'm all for teachers getting pay raises and adding more teachers to provide better education to our students, but I just think the district needs to take a close, hard look at, at how they're divvying up all the funds and providing resources for the education of the students in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. That being said, I, I am against the, the tax increase, but I am for whatever it takes to keep teachers here, and, and I think by providing teacher raises and those things of that nature, it's going to be a plus and a benefit for the district. So that's all I wanted to say. Also, Frank, I hope you, you feel better and...
Me too.
I would suggest you read Joshua 1:9.
Next up, Catherine Carlin.
My name is Catherine Carlin. I live at 1210 Derbyshire Lane in Carrollton. I have paid taxes in this school district for the past 34 years, and only in the last 10 years have I had a student in CFB, so please don't do the math. My daughter Riley is a sophomore at Turner Metza, which is the STEM Academy in CFB, which would be another program that would be at risk without the TRE. Dr. Burns, President Shore, and members of the board, I rise in favor of the tax ratification election. I'm sure most of us in this room have been part of the conversation about how schools these days have to do more with less and how we've lost a big chunk of funding that frankly will probably never recover, and how teachers are asked, are tasked with the education of tomorrow's citizens and leaders but aren't paid a wage proportional to that responsibility. I'm also sure most of us in this room have not lain awake nights hoping for a tax increase to compensate for, to paraphrase the judge, "an undeniably imperfect Byzantine school funding system." But I'm also sure that our district, as we've all seen tonight, the leaders have left no stone unturned in looking for an answer to this shortfall. CFB has and is widely recognized as being fiscally conservative and responsible, and I trust in dealing, in the data that supports this request. And so, in essence, this is our great opportunity, if not responsibility, to take care of our own, to walk the walk, to be able to do something here about school funding and teacher wages, to take care of our teachers with a competitive wage, to make sure the CFB continues the trend of low teacher turnover, to take care of each student with the best teachers giving them the best opportunity for high achievement, to take care of our district and our community with investment in a future for all of us. I look forward to be part of that conversation, and I urge you to adopt the TRE. Thank you.
Next up, Alida Muñoz.
My name is Alida Muñoz. I live at 2405 Via Barcelona in Carrollton, Texas, since 1974. I have prepared a little, but most of the things have, that I, I was going to talk about, I already said. What I can say is, the last time I spent time and came here to speak about something that was taking money away from our school budget, that you seem to be, and we all are because I had children, I don't have them anymore, in the school district, you seem not to be much interested when somebody was suing the school district, taking money away from the budget, and yet he was rewarded with a seat at the board that he was taking money from, which is ridiculous. So I kind of lost a little bit my trust in that you're going to do the best thing, but again, I will try again. Now, I, this time we are talking about tax money spend without a real clear plan. You know, I, I heard all the, but I'm not buying it. So on behalf of myself and my husband, that's sick and couldn't make it tonight, we are completely against another 8.6% tax increase on top of another 10, you know, on top of the 10% we already got. Because we're on a fixed income, and we've paid taxes all along, and I think we still have enough money to take good care of our students and our... have enough money to take good care of our students and our, you know, in the school district. So I'm against that. I would appreciate your consideration of not going ahead with this proposal. And the other thing I would like to add is, how about working on a budget like most of those of us do in our homes? I mean, when things get tough, like right now, we're having a lot of medical bills, you know, we cut down, and we don't go out as much or don't eat out as much. That's how everybody does it. I can see, you're using our money anyway, so you might as well use it wisely. So I hope that you listen to us this time, the people that are paying the money. Thank you.
Next up, Patricia Edmiston.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I understand several of the board members have over 65 exemptions. If that is the case, I would like to suggest that those members who have that exemption recuse themselves when the vote comes. If you all choose to go forward with this large tax increase, I will be voting against it. I would vote for an increase of some lesser amount if it were going to go directly to teachers' salaries. So I will be voting against it if you choose to go this 8.6%. Thank you.
Next up, Mary Meyer.
I'm Mary Margaret Meyer, 14618 Tanglewood Drive, Farmers Branch. The last time I was here to speak to y'all was the time when we decided to, you guys decided to spend over $60,000 to solve an issue. And I'm here again. I was disappointed then. I'm here again disappointed. And I find that when we are losing students, the rate is going down, that our taxes are supposed to be going up. And the logic of that does not make any sense. I watched the presentation, and I understand that our tax rate is compared to Dallas or whatever is good. That's great. Let's keep it that way. Let's not compete, okay? Let's compete with making our students better, our teachers happy, and I think we can do that without having to raise the tax rate. Again, this is not, we're talking about increasing our taxes 8.6% during a time when the economy is not getting better, folks. It's getting worse. It's getting worse for most of us. You guys got a raise this year. I've had to take a reduction in my pay that I'm making half of what I made four years ago. You guys got a raise. I'm thrilled. There's a lot of us that are in that kind of situation. We need to start working with what we've got and dealing with what we have. And by going out and saying arbitrarily, you know, and setting an 8.6 and projecting a deficit is irresponsible. You people were voted into position by we, the people. Our trust is in you to do the right thing. We just want you to do the right thing. Administration went up. Student enrollment goes down. What am I not understanding about this? I mean, I am not seeing how this makes sense. If teachers had gone up, that might be something else, but administration has gone up. Teachers have gone down. Students have gone down. What's going on? I'm very much against the 8.6. You all have already got an increase this year. You're going to get tremendous increases, and I know it doesn't apply to this coming year, okay? I watched the presentation. But the money's coming, and more will continue to come if we keep ourselves competitive and people like the rates they're looking at when they move here. They will bring their kids maybe, because this, we've kept ourselves within budgets. We've kept ourselves lean and tight. This just makes sense, what you're talking about. And I understand how everybody, you know, and when you've got a kid in the school district, you know, you want it the best. And I've got my granddaughters in school districts, and I want them to have the best. And I want them to have the best teachers. They don't need more administrators. They don't need a higher tax rate when some of those kids are struggling in the homes that they're in now for ends to be met. Thank you.
Next up, John Delorme.
John Delorme, 6643 Daleyon Street, Irving, Texas 75039. I'm president of the Villas of Vincenzo Los Colinas Homer Association. So I'm here on behalf of myself and my neighborhood, that I was grateful that they supported me to lead our neighborhood in our community, but then also, I was grateful for their support last May when I ran for the board. My platform is clear. When I ran for the board last May, I advocated lower taxes, balanced budget, term limits, and open government. I also said that if the Supreme Court did not do the right thing and direct the legislature to put more money into the schools to give our taxpayer here locally a break, then we were going to have to live with the revenue we have, not the revenue we would like to have. Well, our Supreme Court decided to not touch the hot potato of school finance and throw it back onto the legislature. Our local taxpayers don't have billions of extra dollars laying around. Our state does. Our state has billions and billions of dollars of unspent revenue that our taxpayers have provided them already. I'm an expert at this, because I actually, for the last seven and a half years, worked for our state agency tasked with keeping our economy strong and moving in our state. I've not got a raise as a state employee, and I'm using a DOS computer system at work. So our state just isn't lean and mean. It is really on the night. So the legislature should do the right thing and put more money into schools, because they've got the revenue to do it, not our local taxpayers. And it's unfortunate that the Supreme Court did not give them that direction. But I already know that we have four votes on the school board tonight to put a tax election on the ballot, so the voters of Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD will have the ultimate say about how they want to fund their local school district. And I have to say, I could live anywhere in the world, and for the second time now, I have chosen to be a taxpayer in the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. I initially lived in the city of Dallas and Denton County in our school district, and now I live on the West Side in Los Colinas, which Irving and Coppell was the old Hackberry School District that merged with Carrollton in '48. We have become the economic engine of this school district. We have the highest value property commercially and residentially. We provide most of the revenue to this district. We have never had anybody run and be elected from the West Side. I know one day we will make history in that regard, and I will not rest until that is done, because my voting precinct alone, where I live, has provided about 30 million extra dollars in the Los Colinas TIF to this district in addition to our regular taxes that we pay. We have contributed greatly to the school district, and we are grateful to our school district. Ms. Dobis said earlier about Rancho High School, a high school that serves Western Farmers Branch, Western Carrollton, Irving and Coppell. We're just not 307th in the nation. We're 19th in the state of Texas. How many high schools do you think we have in Texas? We have a lot of high schools. Rancho High School is 19th in the state of Texas, 99.5% graduation rate. That is something to be proud of in this school district. So great things are happening in Carrollton Farmers Branch, and our local taxpayers are going to have to make the decision if they want to fund more at the local level. I would suggest they nail their legislatures and tell them to give them a break and put more money in our public schools. That's what I would suggest. But we are going to have an election. It is going on the ballot, and the voters will have the ultimate decision to make. I'm just sorry to say that I kind of forecasted this in the election in May, that this may occur. But this is vitally important, public education in our state. I'm a product of the state's public school system. I strongly support public education. There is no better investment. It's the most conservative thing we can do, and it is the, how our schools perform directly affects our property values and our ability to get and retain businesses and an educated workforce that they need. This directly affects the biggest investment folks have, which is their home value. So the cruel irony is with school finance, unlike other local governments that actually keep higher value revenue, like cities and counties and hospital districts and so forth, what the audience may not understand is, is the state takes that money away the next budget year. Local school districts do not keep the value increase on property like cities do. That's the difference. And I've advocated for years appraisal reform across the board, where we're not getting hit 10% a year. It's limited, and if they reform the school funding formula, they should let, unlike other governments, school districts keep the revenue, because then maybe we wouldn't be in a situation where we're having to have an extra tax election. That being said, since we're having another tax election, it's a special election we're having to pay for anyway on the November ballot, I would suggest the board put a term limit question on there. Do you support term limits in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD? Yes or no? Since we're having the election anyway for the tax rate, I would suggest throwing that proposition on there as well. It's going to be efficient, save our taxpayers money from having another proposition on the ballot, and I would suggest the board consider doing that. I think our public would like to weigh in on the tax rate, and I think they would like to weigh in on term limits, too. Thank you.
I am a Carrollton resident. I live in 1300 Golden Gate Drive in Carrollton. I have lived here for 10 years. I didn't write down anything. I'm very impressed by the people who prepared so well, and also impressed by the people who spoke from their heart and said so good things. I, for next time, I'm going to be much better prepared, but I can tell you this right now. From watching the presentation and listening to other speakers, and being myself a consultant in process improvement, among other things I do in life, I can tell you that a decrease in enrollment and an increase in administration and a raise of, for you guys, which I just learned, are symptoms of a very unhealthy organization. And they're symptoms of mismanagement, and that is, makes a very good base to be opposed to this tax increase. And I totally agree with, excuse me, what is your name?
John.
John, yes. And everything he explained. The explanation that you gave us looks very good on paper and very good on that screen, but it doesn't address specific, in a more specific way, how you can explain, for example, the deficits that you forecast. And it doesn't explain, at least I didn't understand, what other ways you have used as resources to get that money. And I'm learning that another option would have been to demand it to the state, or at least to encourage the people of Carrollton to put more pressure on our legislators to give you the money. And I also empathize with other speakers who have expressed concern in certain programs disappearing from the schools. And that is not necessarily a consequence of let less, spend less, and cut these programs. That's something that I always question, because conservative, conservative views, and excuse me, I don't mean anything by saying conservative. I'm just maybe using the wrong word. Well, I have an accent, okay? English is my second language. You have to give me a break. But maybe the right way to explain it is to say, traditional ways to manage things, look at just less, let's spend less money, instead of looking at really what adds value to the students. My sister is a teacher, not for Carrollton Farmers Branch, for another school district that I won't mention, but we see how money is wasted, how the emphasis frequently on things that are irrelevant for kids to learn are encouraged, highly encouraged, how much time a teacher spends filling out reports that are useless and do not reflect reality, and how much students are forced to memorize and pass all these standardized tests that don't help a student know where the Atlantic Ocean is. So I don't really get very impressed by those statistics of how money has been spent versus how money could have been spent. And I don't see why these very nice programs that other speakers have mentioned would be cut, just because you don't get the money. My question is, how you're really spending the money and what's the emphasis given? And definitely not in favor of just more money in a questionable way to spend it.
Before I ask, say, the next piece here, Mr. Delorme, I want to apologize. You were the only name I mispronounced. I'm sorry. I know what your name is. I'm sorry, John. Are there any other members of the audience who would like to speak to the board about the proposed budget and tax rate for 2016-17? Approach the podium, sir.
My name is Clay Russell. I live in Farmers Branch. I rise to, in opposition of this vote. One of my, one of my many things on this tax ratification election, if I understand correctly, One of my, one of my many things on this tax ratification election, if I understand correctly, our assessed values have gone up by 22 million for the district. Is that correct? So if your budget is going up, why do we need to increase the tax rate? I don't quite get that. I know, I've lived, lived in Farmers Branch for probably 26 years now. I know that some of you might remember, we replaced the, the entire council in Farmers Branch because they cost everybody a penny on their tax rate for illegal immigration lawsuits. You propose a tax rate of 11 cents? Why would anything change? I heard several rise and say, oh, we might lose the ID program, teachers won't get pay raises, we could lose Metza Academy, all these wonderful things that this district does. If you're getting a $22 million increase in your funding, why would we lose those programs? I think, I think we're being, being, there's been fear, there's fear factor going on here. Another thing, politically, I know about Farmers Branch, I know that we're very, our electorate is much older. Many, many of our residents could tell you how many have been capped, how many over 65 and have been capped. Now, I heard the presentation here, and it said, went into the 65 and older, what will happen? If I understand this correctly, your assessed rate is capped. The tax rate that that assessment is on is not. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that could be a serious problem come the next And then I'll just attest, I do second the last, the person that rose. Could we put term limits on this tax ratification election as well? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Yes, sir?
I live at 3202 Cutler Place in Carrollton. I just wanted to quickly give you an idea of, of my day, not that you probably even care, but I have a venue here, why not? I woke up at my home that I paid taxes on, that I paid taxes to buy and I paid taxes to, you know, to operate my property taxes. And I drove to work in my truck that I paid taxes on, using gas that I paid taxes with or on. I got, I got some coffee, I paid tax on that. I got to work and I made a wage that I'm taxed on. I bought my kids some stuff for baseball that I paid taxes on, and I went home to watch TV that I paid taxes on. I got a phone call, I paid tax on that. And during the day, I paid tax on all my cell phone calls I made as well. And I paid tax on the food that I ate at home as well. And someday, hopefully a long time from now, I'm going to die, and guess what? There's going to be a tax on that, too. So you can kind of understand when we talk about taxes, how people get very concerned and they get very emotional about paying taxes and paying more taxes on top of what we've already have. Imagine, if you will, if all of our taxes, if that, and I didn't include them all, but what if, what if all those tomorrow, they called and said, we're going to raise all those by almost 10%? That's pretty significant in my life, okay? So I'm not in favor of the TRE, but let me tell you some advice that my mom gave me because a lot of what I heard going on was, we're going to do exactly what the others have done because it just makes sense. Well, my mom's sitting right over there, and she'll be happy to give you advice, too. But she told me when I was little that just because the other kids are playing on the freeway and jumping off and doing everything, I don't have to do that. So you don't always have to follow the flock to make your own decisions. Thank you.
You know what? I love what you're doing. I love the whole process, and I'm proud to live in this community. But we're retired. And I actually took money I had last year and went down and taught at TJ High School, okay? Volunteered to teach. I spent money on things I gave to the students, and it was a class on character. So that has nothing to do with taxes, but we are on a fixed income, and I have spent money on people I love. I'm not going to quit. So this isn't about the good guys and the bad guys. It's like a big family saying, us seniors, good heavens. I mean, it's like, we're not getting increases. I'm glad that everything's going well with a lot of people, but there's a whole bunch of people that live in your community that can't afford more taxes. So, anyway, I just had to say that. I don't want people to think that there's a, the bad half of the group and there's a good half of the group. It has nothing to do with it. It is being good stewards of your money because we have to be. When I go to the store, I, I get every coupon I can get. I have studied all the circulars. I have done my homework. And guess what? If I can do my homework to that extent and still give away a whole bunch of money, which we do, we tithe all over the place, but then I go, if you, if I, my taxes have to be collected, there's a lot I can't do anymore. So I just wanted you to know, I love all of you, but I don't want to see the group all mad at each other over something stupid because kids are so important. I mean, I'll go out of my way to help any one of your kids. I would. I'd give the shirt off my back. So it's not about the bad guys. We love you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, I hereby close this public hearing, so portion of our meeting, and reconvene the public meeting. Our next agenda item is number 2D. Consider all matters related to the 2016-2017 budget, including execution of a resolution adopting and approving said budget. Board members, this is an action item. We have heard from the district administration and others during the process of building the proposed budget during the past few months as well as this evening. Are there any questions for the administration? Mr. Shackman?
First of all, let me thank all of you for coming. I don't care whether you are for or against, you're here. We have another meeting coming up on the first of September. I'd love to see y'all back. I think we all would. We need more involvement from our communities, helping in leadership and being a part and being active in our schools. I also think that you've probably gotten a pretty good picture tonight that school finance in Texas is a crazy, complicated thing. Tier one, tier two, recapture, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and it is a very, very difficult thing. Mr. Tillman, I have a question because we were looking at the two slides in particular, and you don't need to re, bring them back up, I think I can define them well. There was one that showed the area tax rates, and our tax rate is, is much lower. When we were showing those tax rates, that includes both the MNO and the INS tax in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, for example, Frisco, who's had to build a whole lot of schools and has had several significant bonds, they're, they're paying more taxes because they have a lot more debt. And so sometimes that, and it relates to the other, because when we look at the per student spending, was that also impacting? Because are we dividing the number of students into the total budget?
We're actually only looking at that particular number as operating expenditure.
So that is even though.
So it does not include debt.
Okay, okay, good.
And it doesn't include capital.
Good, okay.
Strictly operating, but all funding sources.
Good.
In addition, with those bond dollars, there's many things that those districts are doing that we're actually having to pay out of MNO right now, in particular, related to technology and infrastructure and some other things. So they're, they're picking up that piece. It's in the tax rate, it's in the other side. We're picking that up on the MNO side with the lack of any debt issues since 2003.
Good. And the only, only concern that I have is that it's always very difficult, just like there is complexity, it is very difficult to get an apples-to-apples comparison between Irving and Frisco and Carrollton Farmers Branch and Levelland, which I still don't know where it is.
Absolutely.
Okay, you know, working with that. I also, trying to pick up the pieces, so we are projecting in the budget that there will be a 15.5 approximately million dollar increase in our revenue coming from property taxes.
Yes.
The TRE would add another 22, 23 million, somewhere about 22 in taxes. My mom taught for 33 years. She would come back and haunt me if I wasn't perpetually supportive of making the best situation for our teachers. We've offered a 3.5% raise, which I voted for and was happy to vote for. I wish it could be five. But if we're getting 15.5 million and if performance pay and teacher raises is only 5 million, we've got another $10 million of proposed income for the budget that will not have to come from TRE.
I'm sorry, I'm not following all of your numbers.
We are, it will cost us approximately $5 million to continue with our performance pay and the three and a half, five, three and a half percent increase, that much more in our budget this coming year. And we're projecting 15.5 more just from property taxes. So it seems to me that that's something that certainly we are well within our ability to do without any kind of a TRE.
We have other items as well. I can.
All right, I remember looking at some of those other items, and it was about 16, doing quick math in my head, it was 16 to 18 million dollars worth of things. And we have potentially, by our projection, 15 and a half million more coming from additional property taxes. It would not take much to close that gap, and it is highly likely those property tax figures might, as they have been often in the last couple of years, be even more. So it looks to me like we are sitting in pretty strong shape even without a TRE.
I, I don't believe we are.
Well, I guess we'll choose to disagree on that.
Okay, well, we have to keep in mind that we're losing revenue based upon our reduction in students that we're serving.
Does that not also reduce our expenses because now we're not providing resource and services for those students?
We didn't lower our teachers. We've kept the same number of teachers that will, and we were intentional when we staffed. We kept the same number even though we, we had a decline of 450 kids last year.
So why would we choose to do that?
Yeah, let me, can I help you, Ms. Tillman? Mr. Shackman, that's a spot-on question, and I think it's great for the audience to know that in the state of Texas, we have a class size requirement, and in the past, we've asked for waivers for that to meet the budget. This board directed us not to do that.
Right.
And so the numbers don't always fall exactly that you can reduce a teacher because you may lose one kid or two kids, but you still need the same number of teachers at that grade level before. So it's, it's, you're right on. It's not an apples-to-apples sometimes how you figure it, and that's how the staffing works, that you can lose enrollment but not lose a teacher sometimes with that.
Okay, but again, it seems like we're getting close, would be my, my comment and question there, so.
Can I ask a question and then go back to you, Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Klein?
So that property tax increase this year, do we have it a year from now, or does it get taken back by the state?
This year, we're losing 11 million. That's from the prior year increase, assuming that the state doesn't change the formulas. In 1718, then we'll lose from the 15 million, the growth this year. That will hit us in one year through the funding system.
So each year, you lose what you may have gotten the year before, but you might get some of that back, and then you lose it all over the next year.
Right, so there could be a year, for example.
Which I think Mr. Delorme called the cruel irony.
I think Mr. Delorme explained it better than me.
I think he did.
He may become our new school finance presenter, so. The, the year that really could cause us even more grief is the year that our values do nothing. They could maintain their same level, and then we would still get hit if our values went up from the prior year. So we could have no gain in property values and then get hit with an additional reduction from the state, which is one reason why we want to maintain a healthy fund balance so that we would be prepared for that occurrence.
Any other question, Mr. Ramos?
Okay, so, just, just to clarify that, so we're looking at with, if the TRE goes, voted in, and the voters voted in, we're looking at about 22, 23 million dollar increase, correct?
22 million is from the TRE, but we have to send over 5 million of that back to the state.
That's what I wanted to clarify. So 5 million of that, right off the top, goes back to the state.
Mm-hmm.
So it's even more reason why you should go contact your legislators so they can start releasing and change this finance. Okay. Can you roughly break down, I guess, what the rest, the remaining, how it would be allocated? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I know DISD is considering a TRE also, and I do like the way that they have broken down how the pennies are being allocated. So I was wondering if you could give myself and everybody else here a little bit more clarification as to how that, how that would be used.
Okay, so the board went ahead and approved a 4.8 million dollar pay increase. It was three and a half percent. So in 1617, the TRE pennies would fund that. Without a TRE, we're still going to fund that, but it's going to come out of a reserve fund, which puts us in a different situation going into 1718 in terms of how we can continue moving forward with our goals on Vision 2020 to come back up into the market on our pay and to move our performance up. So with the TRE, it would be funded, funding the raise, it would be funding our performance pay, it would be funding our technology improvements that we're looking at $3 million to continue the progress we started this year with technology in the classroom. It would be funding four buses. It would be funding additional $3 million that we would come back to the board in November. And at that point, we would review with the board our options for those funds that would come from those board identified and staff identified priorities that we worked on in our work study, as well as we've worked with our principals and our district improvement council. Those things that came to the top were class size reduction, instructional support for our campuses. We had some additional initiatives that we wanted to move forward for programs such as dual language and physical activity that we've had work studies on. We would take a look at all those items. If it's approved by the voters, then we would come back with the board with how that $3 million would be spent. Without the TRE, those items won't be in the budget. In addition, we would have 5.8 million that would go to recapture out of the pennies. That's about 25% of what we would be receiving on those pennies. And then finally, we have the increase in our TIF payment that it would fund. That is a result of property value as, growth as well. We have to pay that irregardless of the TRE, so it would either come out of the TRE funds or we would take it out of reserves. Again, there's certain items that we would fund out of reserves, which puts us in a very different situation going into 1718.
I do have a follow-up question for that. You know, the board recently approved the pay increase for the teachers.
Yes.
What has me concerned is without a TRE, is this district going to have that financial flexibility to make additional pay increases to teachers for the following years? Because you, you mentioned that there was that one year where there was no increase in pay, and one of the things that I, that I really want to advocate for is these teachers to continue being able to get pay increases. So that concerns me. Without the TRE, are we going to have that financial flexibility?
I don't believe so going into 1718.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Mr. Shore?
Ms. Tillman, I think I've got two. First one segues from Mr. Ramos's. One of the audience members said, you don't just follow the flock for a purpose of following the flock. We saw a number of school districts who have passed TREs, calling for TREs, calling for bond elections. If those TREs pass, should Mr. Ramos's concern, if we don't pass one, be elevated that we will not be able to maintain? will not be able to maintain competitiveness in our staff?
Yes, and if you recall from that map in the top-right corner, the Collin County, every district in Collin County has invested additional resources and we lose a lot of our families and our students and our teachers. People want to go and live and work there and they are investing more. That's who we're competing with to keep our teachers.
So Mr. Ramos's concern perhaps should be heightened?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here's my other question. And I think John did a good job of explaining this as he normally does with everything he talks about. He vastly exceeded three minutes, by the way. Does a school district get more money just because property values in the school district increase?
No.
Well, I heard some people say that we got X million dollars. By the way, I'm about to have a heart attack, but I heard some people say that and I'm trying to figure out, what have I missed?
There is a one-year lag in the system, again, as our values go up, our share of our funding goes up. The state's share of our funding goes down. Now, there's a timing difference in there, so our gain this year will impact us the following year, however, our gain from the prior year is impacting us this year.
So it's going to catch up to us?
Yes.
Thank you, that's what I thought, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Does anyone at this time have a motion to make regarding adoption of the 2016-17 budget and executing the resolution as presented? Mr. Goode?
I'm actually, considering what John Delorme said, the only way to resolve this is to have the TRE on the ballot so that our constituents can decide. Because our constituents is a much larger number than just we who are sitting here in this audience. Therefore, I make a motion to approve the 2016-2017 budget, including the execution of a resolution adopting and approving said budget.
Don't you have...
I have a motion from Mr. Goode to accept the adoption of the 2016-17 budget and executing it as presented. Do I have a second? Mr. Shore, second. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Are we going to have no discussion?
Yes, we are. On what?
Run a vote is you get a motion, you get a second, and then there is the call of the question, do we have, is there any discussion, and then the vote relative to that motion?
We might invite discussion.
Yes, any discussion.
All right, well, obviously I had a comment.
I had the opportunity to volunteer and produce 1,100 hot dogs last week as a proud PTA member at Vivian Field Middle School for their back-to-school programs. We've talked a lot about numbers and we've talked a lot about percents and all of that, but for me, this tax election is not numbers. I had the opportunity to talk to a gentleman standing in the line with his sixth-grade daughter and a third-grade son, and he was trying to explain as he walked by, and I was just standing there, and he said hi to me, I think he thought I was one of the teachers or maybe just saw I was an old guy. But, you know, he started talking and then as they started moving down, he began saying to his daughter that, no, they couldn't afford the supplies and she couldn't have two of the shirts. For over 20 years, I spent my career working with and for homeless shelters, for low socioeconomic issues, and today, in Carrollton Farmers Branch schools, we have between 4,000 and 6,000 students that the North Texas Food Bank assured me on the phone this morning are food-challenged. I am not going to be able to vote for this with this kind of a tax raise because if we can't live on the 15 million more we're getting, I am not going to take the food off that man's table and that's what's going to happen in 3,000 to 4,000 or 5,000 homes in our area. I want resources and supplies for our schools, I want good money for our teachers, I want to be competitive in all things, but, board members, I cannot take food off those tables. And this is going to hurt hundreds and hundreds of low-income households in our district. We've been talking about diversity, we've been talking about the problems of low economic education and all of those things are there, but in a very real sense, this is the problem. And so I won't vote yes for a tax increase. And, board members, I encourage you to consider carefully our actions tonight.
Mr. Shakeman and other board members, this motion has nothing to do with the tax increase, that is another item coming up later. This is to approve the 2016-17 budget.
The budget is built on a tax increase. I'm not saying, it is built on a 15.5 million dollar property tax increase. So, you know, as we, we can't, I can't justify a budget that has those kind of projections in it when I believe it's going to make a huge difference in homes in our community.
Okay, I just wanted to make a point of clarification.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, once again, motion been made by Mr. Goode and seconded by Mr. Shore. All those in favor of accepting the motion on 2016-17 budget, if you're in favor, raise your hand. I have five votes in favor, two opposed, motion carries. Our next agenda item under Board Operations is item number 2E. Consider all matters related to the proposed tax rate for the tax year 2016, including a resolution setting said tax rate. This is an action item. We will consider item 2E, consider statutory motion regarding the tax rate. Board members, please keep in mind that there is a specific statutory language that must be used when adopting a tax rate above the effective rate. Sample motion language has been provided to each of you. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Shore?
I want to adopt Mr. Shakeman's theory of talking first. So I want to, I want to ask a question.
All right.
If I may. Dr. Burns, there was a speaker who recited the fact that there's no clear plan that we have a top-heavy administration. But, Ms. Tillman, how long has Dr. Burns been the superintendent of this high-performing school district?
Since Ms. Tillman was not here when I became. She didn't know that till '08 is your interim, '09 officially is your superintendent.
Well, let's see if you know this answer, okay? Where does he place in terms of salaries of superintendents and where does he place in terms of length of tenure as a superintendent in this community?
Actually, when that question was posed, I did pull that information and I looked at the same districts that we look at in terms of the market for our teachers, so I looked at HEB, Irving, Capella, Lewisville, Mesquite, Garland, Plano, Richardson, Allen, and Frisco.
Okay.
Within those districts, Dr. Burns is below the average as well. When I tried to compare to see how he, his pay had compared from '12-'13 to '15-'16 in terms of pay increases, out of all those districts, none of those districts have the same superintendent in place as we do today. I double-checked because I was surprised, but every one of those districts has a new superintendent now, today, versus what they had in '12-'13. So I couldn't really compare to see if they had gained about the same amount of ground over time, but even at that, he was below average with only three in that group making less than him in terms of annual pay.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Dr. Burns, we've heard from Ms. Tillman, we've seen the presentation, we've heard speakers speak both in favor of this board allowing the community to vote on the tax rate, and we've heard speakers in this audience suggest that we should not give the voters the opportunity to make a decision. If the voters are going to make this decision, okay, I think the voters are entitled to know from the big cheese, that's you, by the way, okay, why is your administration making the recommendation that this board call for a TRE, which, by the way, doesn't raise anybody's taxes? It merely provides for the community to decide whether they want to raise the taxes. And I'll remind some folks here about a core principle that we adopt, that government can govern only with the consent of the governed. And I don't know how the governed doesn't decide if they want to raise taxes if they're not allowed to vote on it. But why are you calling for, why are you asking us to support this?
Mr. Shore, I'm glad you asked that question, okay? Because we talk a lot about why and know your why in this system. And I do want to say this before I get to the why piece of that is that I have been the superintendent since '08, I've been in the school system almost 30 years, I'm going on '29. I've never been more proud and more committed to what we do in this school district than anybody in the system or any other system. And tonight validated why I'm so proud of being here, okay? And Mr. Shakeman, I think, said it, because all of you came to support your opinions and that's what makes us a great community and a great school district. So I just want to say thank you to all of you, many of you, I probably had your kids and now I have your kids' kids as their superintendent, so they're probably wondering, well, no wonder the guy's been here so long, he's so old. But thank you for allowing me to serve. But the why, let's get away from numbers, although I'm going to say some numbers because we're dealing with students, not numbers, but students. But we have a number, 26,152 students that we served in 2014-15 and they all have a story and they all have a face. And I want to just tell you a little bit about their story. 16,920 are hungry, they qualify for free and reduced lunch. Mr. Shakeman said it absolutely right on, we got to be careful about how we help them and how we tax them to a degree, but we also serve them with that money we get. We also serve them and give them a chance to get out of the cycle of poverty with what we do in education. We need resources to do that. 2,432 of those kids have a story of either a mental or a physical impairment or both, it's not of their own cause, they had no, they had no choice in the matter. We serve them and it takes extra teachers, it takes extra specialized care, and it takes fewer numbers to serve those kids to change the quality of their life for them and their parents. We have another 2,373 kids who are cognitively advanced, they're academically gifted, we owe them the same specialized training, the same classes that can meet their needs. We have 6,904 that speak a different language other than English and that's a great thing because we're going to create a bilingual community. We have 4,105 that are nomadic, their mobility continues to move around in all of the districts in this state. But I want to tell you about the obstacles they've overcome because this gets to the why and what we can do when we're committed, what we can do when we have a team of trustees and a community committed to doing whatever it takes to make public education work. Despite those hurdles, despite those obstacles, 25,105 came to school 96% of the time. And in 2014-15, 1,611 graduated in four years at 93.9% graduation rate, despite those hurdles. So those are the reasons, those are the stories of why, Mr. Shore, in my, give or take, eight years of being your superintendent, I've never felt more committed and never felt stronger about a recommendation that we make to you tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First, I'd like to thank Tonya Tillman for the presentation, I thought it was a great presentation, especially for the public to help them understand public finance. It's no secret, the last three years, during board work-studies, pre-meetings, and our work-studies, that I have always talked about and advocated that I think that we should be doing more outsourcing in order to save dollars. I think that before we took these necessary steps to engage and talk about TRE, I think we should have did more drill-down process into our services to see how we can best reallocate some of our services for the betterment of our district and saving monies. CFE's core business function is educating kids, that's what we do. As part of educating kids, we have other non-instructional services such as food services, security, building maintenance, landscaping, these are not our core functions. Now, what I suggested that we do is maybe look to outsource some of those core functions because other companies that do those services can do it better than we can and do it cheaper than we can. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, there are about 14,000 schools in the United States and between 12 and 15% of them, those districts outsource food services. 95% of all school districts in the U.S. are doing some form of outsourcing. All colleges and universities outsource food services and most of them outsource maintenance. As a district, we have to, in my opinion, take a look at and see what we can do as far as outsourcing security, food services, and building maintenance and landscaping. You know, the major part of our budget, I believe 75% of our budget is payroll salaries, something like that. Therefore, when looking at our budget, personnel costs is the first place as a district we should be looking at because any reduction in employees will provide immediate and predictable savings. The practice of outsourcing allows our school district to receive the same or better care or quality of service than we're currently doing right now. But the real financial savings of outsourcing is that we place current employees on somebody else's books. That's the real savings. Number one, it allows us to reduce the number of employees that we currently have. Number two, it would allow the district to reduce the amount of employees that they're paying employees retirement and healthcare benefits. As we all know, healthcare benefits have went up in the last two or three years and going to continue to rise. That's more annual contribution that our district must make to the teacher retirement system. As one school district official told me last week, what outsourcing does is remove the entire categories of a school district worker from the TRS rolls. Now, we have some non-instructional positions that could be better suited, in my opinion, to outsource. CFE has approximately 3,100 employees. I think of that around about 700 auxiliary employees. So one out of four employees of auxiliary staff or something like that, I think we pay them in the neighborhood of 20 million dollars in salaries. I think we pay them in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars in salaries. Would you like to say twenty-five percent of twenty, of twenty million? I think we would. Everybody does. Of course we do. You know, my expertise in this matter, first and foremost, I'm the founder and CEO of State Tax Group. It's, it's a company located in Addison. And, uh, since two thousand and five, we've saved our cl- our clients twenty-five million dollars in state and local tax savings. That's everything from governments, municipalities, large and small corporations. That same principle and that same methodology, we can do here. We could do here. I think Mr. Shackman made a point a while ago. I think we're just a little bit, if we didn't have a TRE and we looked at outsourcing some of these functions, we'd be right where we wanna be. You know, we partner with these nonprofit-based corporations to provide backpacks and all these things for our kids, which is a great partnership. There's a lot of kids that we serve. There's a lot of poverty in our district. I think we have to be mindful of our actions. Raising taxes on properties, I do property tax evaluations. In the next two years, when you talk to Denton County, you talk to Dallas County, they're gonna go up again next couple of years. They'll probably level off in about two years. You gotta look at all the things that we got going on that help raise dollars. In Farmers Branch, you got Mustang, I think Mustang Crossing, which will bring a hundred units online. Uh, we got Rayford, Rayford Crossing down in Carrollton. Out on the west side, we got some new houses that came online. We're gonna get to where we need to, to be in the future. My question is, during the TRE, we're gonna have abundant and more money, uh, in our coffers. Which I'm not opposed to that, but at the same time, I think we have to be mindful of our taxpayers in this district. But at the same time, I admire what our administration, I've been here six years. And I've seen our administration perform, uh, bravely during some of these lean times when the state cut back on our budget. And I also admire what we're doing right now. I mean, we raised the level of starting teacher salary. Teachers are getting raises. Good things are happening. That's what we should do. I think this TRE is very ambitious, in my opinion. But, lastly, I thank each and every one of these board members for what they do. Because at the end of the day, we all want what's best for our students, our parents, and our community. That's it.
Mr. Ramos?
I wanna, I wanna thank everyone that's here, the administration, the participation from the guests, the trustees. I know I'm not the only one that's been struggling with this decision over the last two weeks when we've proposed. And thinking about it, people have reached out to me, for and against it. It's been extremely difficult the last two weeks trying to bring this and mull over my decision which way I'm gonna lean with my vote. And I think Richard hit it on the nail. I think at the end of the day, regardless of what happens with the TRE, if we put it up to an election for the voters, the administration and the board, we need to start looking at other alternatives. 'Cause if it doesn't go through, if it isn't passed, we need to look at those alternatives to stay ahead of the curve with outsourcing. Because if it doesn't go in, if it doesn't, if it isn't elected, we're going to have to cut corners somewhere. And we need to stay ahead of the curve. And that's what we need to start looking at, I think, Richard.
John?
Yes. Mr. Shore?
Mr. Ramos? I'm gonna cross swords with you. Hopefully, it will be on a intellectual level. If this board votes to call for a TRE, we will not be raising anybody's taxes. All that we will be doing is giving the community an opportunity to decide the quality of the school district they want to provide. That's all that we'll be doing by this vote.
Well, and regardless, we're gonna raise awareness with these legislators. And all of us need to start talking to them because that's an unfortunate decision that came back with the Supreme Court with the school finance. Hopefully, it gets everybody riled up about that.
You're right. Absolutely. Okay, board members, any other comments? Hearing none, seeing none, do I have a motion regarding all matters related to the proposed tax rate for the ta- tax year 2016, including a resolution setting? Uh, what already done that, haven't I? No, 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 no. Still, yeah, I'm still, yeah, I'm still there. This is close to my first rodeo, but that's okay. Yes, do I hear a motion, board members? I had one. Mr. Shore, I mean, Mr. Goode made the motion, made the first motion. Do I have a second?
We need to ensure that we use the required statutory language. Um, it's in each person's folder.
Right.
Okay.
I thought Mr. Shore made the motion.
We have not, there has not been a motion for two E one.
Do you wanna make that motion, Mr. Goode?
If you would first read two E one.
Board members, please keep in mind that there is specific statutory language that must be used when adopting a tax rate above the effective rate. Sample motion languages have been provided to each of you in your folder. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Shore?
Mr. Matthews? Number one, I thank you for being the presiding officer at this meeting. Now, moving forward, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of a dollar point three-nine-one-seven, which is effectively a fourteen point seventy percent increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion from Mr. Shore. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Goode. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I have six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Don't I need to do two E two?
That's next, yeah. Two E two is next.
Yes, two E two is, is next.
Wait a second. Our silver-tongued devil was talking.
We just wanna confirm, Mr. Shackman is voting opposed.
Yes.
This is supposed to be a record vote? Okay. Okay.
I didn't see his, I didn't see his hand raise. Yes, six in favor, one opposed, Mr. Shackman was opposed.
Second rodeo.
Do I further move now?
Excuse me?
I further move approval of the resolution to set the tax rate for tax year 2016 as found in item two E of the board book.
I have a motion from Mr. Shore that we approve the resolution to set the tax rate for tax year 2016. Do I have a second?
I'd be happy to.
Mr. Goode, second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, one opposed, Mr. Shore. Our next agenda item under Board Operations is item two F. Consider all matters related to a potential tax ratification election, including adoption of an order for tax ratification election action. Dr. Burns?
Yes, Mr. Matthews, members of the board, there are some specific language that has to be, um, on the record at this time. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Tillman so she can summarize that for you.
Each of you received a draft copy of the tax ratification order. We received an updated version today, so that updated version of the order is in your booklet. You can find that in your folder. And we just, we know that you all have read this order, but we wanted to read some of the items that are included. On page one of the order, it does indicate that the purpose of the tax ratification election is to permit the registered voters of the district to determine whether to approve the tax rate. On the second page of the order, the language of the ballot is provided. The language would read that we're approving the ad valorem tax rate of a dollar thirty-nine seventeen per a hundred dollar valuation in Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District for the current year, a rate that is eleven sixty-five higher per hundred dollar valuation than the school district rollback tax rate for the purpose of improving student learning and achievement for each student. We do indicate Dallas County and Denton County's early voting clerk. We have not received all of the information related to voting and polling places from Dallas and Denton County. So there is an indication in the order on page seven that authorizes Dr. Burns and myself to initiate election contracts with both Dallas and Denton County and then modify to include the actual polling places once we receive those items from Dallas and Denton County. And so we're asking that you approve the final order as presented in your packet.
Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Tillman, do we have any idea of the cost? I notice we, relative to a general school board election, there are, looks like, quite a few more polling locations. I presume that has something to do with it being November and all that. But do we have any idea what we're looking at in terms of costs?
We have requested multiple times for estimates, and to date, I haven't received any numbers. Mr. Lena, have you received anything from? They said it'll be a couple of more weeks before they can give us an indication based upon what else is going to be on the ballot.
Okay, they, and they couldn't even give us any estimates? So basically, the board is being asked to write a blank check. I mean, you and Dr. Burns are not gonna sell us down the river, we know that, but...
Right.
Dr. Burns, could you explain how the number of items on the election ballot gets split among the number of parties involved?
Yeah.
And so it's, the more that gets added on, the more shared the cost is.
There is some, um, cost savings in having it at a general election date, which is, which we will, and there'll be polling places already.
It could be cheaper.
Yeah, it could be cheaper than our general elections. Um, we just don't know that. We don't think it'll be anything out of the ordinary that we've had in the past, which has been, what, around thirty, forty thousand for an election? So we assume it's gonna be some, somewhere around that range. In fact, as Ms. Klein said, maybe even a little break because it's on a uniform election date.
And, and what was the rationale for including the five days of early voting in one location, the three days in another, to another, instead of just using the general voting? And as we did that in our last election, and that drives up our costs. And I realize it was a low turnout election, but I think we had, we had about forty people vote or thirty people vote in both locations that we paid for for two days, so...
We did not have any input on these specific location. These are just what they're providing to us. So we haven't added any for this election. We're gonna go with whatever they, whatever they're going to use.
Okay, board members, do I hear a motion regarding considering all matters related to potential tax ratification election, including adoption of an order for tax ratification election? Mr. Shore?
Let's see how close I get. I move that we, uh, approve the order calling for a tax ratification election for 2016. Close enough?
Yes.
Okay.
A motion from Mr. Shore, do I have a second? Mr. Goode, second. All those in favor, raise your hand. That vote is unanimous. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we will have a ten-minute recess before we come back to take up item number two A. We will recess at eight-twenty-five, we'll be back at eight-thirty-five. Back to order at eight-thirty-seven. At this time, we will take up item number two A. Consider approval of the 2015-2016 final budget amendment for the Carrollton Farmer Branch ISD. This is an action item. Dr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Master Matthews. And members of the board, as you know, part of your role is to approve and, uh, I guess, uh, make the last year's budget official and put it in the books. And so, uh, Mr. Roderick, our CFO, is here tonight to present the fifteen-sixteen budget to you. Mr. Roderick?
Thank you. Uh, there is a document in your folder labeled Final Budget Amendment. Uh, each year, we add funds to provide reserves that will cover any unforeseen journal entries or accruals that may happen after year-end. This helps us to avoid potential compliance issues with our auditors if we were to exceed expenditures over appropriations in a functional category. Um, the, the administration recommends we approve this final budget amendment for fifteen-sixteen.
And all of that is in their folder?
In their folder, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming?
The amended budget.
I have a motion from Mr. Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shackman. All those in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous, six votes for. And for the record, Mr. Shore excused himself for the rest of, remainder of the evening. Our next agenda item is number two B. Consider adopting a resolution to classify a portion of fund balances per the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Action, Board Standard fifty-four, which is G A S B fifty-four. And this is an action item. Dr. Burns?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Matthews. And members of the board, as you're familiar, also, is we also have a, have to have a resolution regarding the fund balance impact from the fifteen-sixteen budget. And Mr. Roderick will tell you about that.
The Governmental Accounting Standard Board of GASB adopted, adopted in two thousand and ten, get, Statement fifty-four, which is GASB fifty-four. Uh, part of our, our yearly financial reporting practices include evaluating our fund balance categories and determining if we want to identify any commitments of our unassigned fund balance. Uh, the two thousand and fifteen-sixteen fiscal year will be the sixth year of our implementation of GASB fifty-four. Uh, committed categories require board authorization. Uh, we are proposing three categories, building in, building construction, repair and maintenance, technology capital replacement, and campus activity funds. The board authorizes the categories through a resolution, and management determines the amount after year-end. Uh, we have included estimates of the proposed commitment amounts. Before any funds can actually be spent in these categories, uh, it would require board approval through a budget amendment. And with a, with the exception of the campus activity funds, which is a special revenue fund. Uh, the administration recommends we have, we, uh, we approve the, uh, resolution.
Board members, do I have a motion to be made at this time? Mr. Shackman?
I would move that the board approve the resolution to classify a portion of fund balances per GASB fifty-four, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Standard, uh, and that we include the three categories as per recommendation of the administration.
I have a motion from Mr. Shackman. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Ramos. All those in favor, raise your hands. That vote is unanimous, six-four. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at item number three now. We have reached the agenda item for comments from board members. And item number three A, comments regarding posted agenda items. Do you have any comments you wish to make at this time? Mr. Goode?
Mr. Matthews? I want to compliment this board on the discussion we've had because we were able to, shall I say, agree and disagree on various aspects of it. But we have reached the understanding that the most important aspect of what we do is for the betterment of all of our students. And I believe by allowing a TRE, as we voted on, to go to the voters, we are handing it off rather cautiously, shall I say, to the voters to decide what the impact may...
off rather cautiously, shall I say, to the voters to decide what the impact may be upon our students. And so it's incumbent upon us to understand and appreciate that the voters realize, shall I say, the pros and the cons of the TRE, and how it directly and indirectly impacts all 26,000 students. So thank you, board members, for the discussion we've had, and I know there's going to be some more discussion as we move forward.
Well said, Mr. Goode, thank you. Any other comments, board members? Hearing none, seeing none. We have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 8:43 PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience, and thank you for being here.